I will now call to order the February 19th regular meeting of the City County Council and Special Service District Councils of Marion County and Indianapolis. We will begin the evening with prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Mallory.
For the prayer this evening, I'd like to welcome Tim Lindsay to lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we love you and we thank you first for our elected officials. We thank you for their commitment service to our city. We thank you for their staff and all the multitude of people that work so hard for our community. Thank you even for this group of people that came out because they have a love for our community. And so for this evening, we ask for your help. Lord, we ask for your wisdom. We ask for your grace and your strength. Lord, I pray that what we do tonight will be honoring and pleasing to your son, Jesus Christ. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, Madam Clerk will take the roll call. Counselors, please register your attendance. Introduction of guests and visitors. Counselors. Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen and fellow colleagues, I rise as a moment of silence if we all would stand because of the tragedy that happened down in Florida to acknowledge the suffering that's going on to families. Please, thank you very much. Just a moment of silence.
Acknowledgement of additional guests. Counselors. Leader McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce a Lawrence Township resident, active guy in the community, good friend, Mr. Brent Addington.
Additional recognitions from Counselor Crider and then Counselor Coates.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize Hank Harrison and Scott Williams from our firefighters' local force 16.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like to welcome and acknowledge Bob Jones, Lawrence City Councilman at large.
I have one more.
Leader McQuillan.
Thank you for the second acknowledgement, Mr. President. We have a former City County Counselor in the audience, former Counselor Lonell Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge this month being Black History Month and that we give a round of applause for Black History Month.
Madam Clerk, official communications.
The following are communications to all members of the City County Council and Police, Fire, Solid Waste Collection, Special Service District Councils of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, February 19th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Respectfully, Stephen J. Clay, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Wednesday, January 31st, 2018, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number 23, 2018. Said hearing to be held on Monday, February 12th, 2018, at 5:30 in room 260 of the City County Building. Respectfully, Nat Trina Debo. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved my signature and delivered this day to the Assistant Clerk of the City County Council, Angela Gonzalez, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance numbers 1 and 2 of 2018, general ordinance numbers 1 through 8, 2018, general resolution number 1, 2018, and special resolution numbers 1 through 3, 2018. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With a point of personal privilege, I would like to make this comment before we proceed. In an effort to preserve this institution and to advance the people's agenda, Counselor Osley and I have agreed to the orderly transfer of power. I will support Counselor Osley's candidacy. My letter of resignation from the office of the President will be presented tonight here at the full council, at which time we will suspend the rules and proceed to a special election. Tonight, I will call upon Democrats and Republicans to support this transition, thus averting any political filibustering. This agreement is in the best interest of moving this branch of government forward. These last several weeks have proven that this council has great resilience and great capacity to get things done. The council has proven that we can have robust and vigorous debates, we can have even contentious disagreements, and somehow find common ground to move the people's agenda forward. Tonight, we begin that process of moving forward. Madam Clerk, I deliver for your certification my official resignation as President of the City County Council, and as such, I give the gavel to the parliamentarian of order tonight, Mr. Andy McMullin.
Point of order.
Counselor Robinson.
Shouldn't the Vice President receive the gavel as opposed to the parliamentarian? The elected Vice President, Zach Adamson.
Rules of council procedure require that in the absence of the President, the Vice President of the council takes the presidency, serves as President.
Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian.
I motion to permit office or corporate council to staff the position of parliamentarian Make a motion to permit office or corporate council to staff the position of parliamentarian on February 19th, 2018.
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. The parliamentarian shall be Mr. Andy Mallon. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Counselor Johnson.
Mr. President, I move to amend the agenda to add the election of a new council president immediately after the adoption of the agenda.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson.
I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
The motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is amended. We will now move to the election of the President of the City Council. I'll turn this over to the parliamentarian. And I've been informed we need to do consent to allow the parliamentarian to conduct this election. Do I have consent? Consent.
Thank you, counselors. I would entertain nominations for the President of the council. Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mallon. I nominate Counselor Bob Osley for the president position.
It has been moved? Oops, sorry.
Yes, it has been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Counselor Robinson.
Mr. Mallon, I move to close the nominations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Counselor Osley as President of the council. It has also been moved and seconded to close nomination. The effect of closing nominations with only one candidate will have the effect of electing Counselor Osley as the president. All those in favor of closing nominations and thereby electing Counselor Osley as president, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, now, counselors, the chair will entertain a motion for a five-minute recess. It's been moved. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Fellow counselors, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege here. I wanted to thank you all for the support and the confidence. Very good. I want to thank you all for the support and the confidence that you've placed in me. We've got a lot of work ahead for 2018, work that's going to require collaboration and innovation, but I'm confident that each one of us is up to that task. I'd like to say one other thing, and that is that without a doubt, we have, our council has shaken the confidence of our constituents. But that was yesterday, and it's time that we move forward. I know that it is, it's within all of our abilities to work together, and I'm looking forward to doing that. So I want to say thank you again. It is time for us to get back to business, and we will start with the next item on the agenda. Item six, approval of the journals, January 29th, 2018. Do I have consent for approval of the journals?
Consent.
Item number seven, presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council Now for presentation of petitions, memorials, and resolutions. Proposal number 13 was referred to the Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 13 came before the Admin and Finance Committee to approve the mayor's appointment of John C. Crouch as the hearing officer to preside over administrative adjunction, parking, citation, and environment violation, and it came out of committee eight to zero. So moved.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, proposal number 13, 2018. Proposal 350, thank you very much. Yes, of course. I guess that would make sense, right? We've moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can you set the? Okay, very good. All right, let's go. Okay. All right, so it's been adopted 23 to, 23 to zero. Proposal number 350, council resolution referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development reappoints Adam Kirsch to the Metropolitan Development Commission. That would be Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, with consent, I would like to take proposals number 350, 351, and 353, 2018, together.
Consent.
Please.
Mr. President, they're all different.
No, those are reappointments.
Oh, they're all strikes. My apologies.
Counselor Jackson.
Permission? Thank you.
I would like to be able to vote separately, point of order, on one of those, if that's possible.
Which one?
350? Well, they're all, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much. Proposal number 350, all these are strikes, so individuals resign their position on these boards, and the commitments recommended that proposals be stricken by a vote of 10 to zero for proposal number 350, proposal 351, and proposal 353. I so move, Mr. President.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, I guess we will come to the board. Sorry about that, guys. I'm thinking I'm in the committee. Let him flirt. Counselor Jackson.
Oh.
Counselor Scales. Counselor Evans. All right, it's been moved 23 to zero. Thank you very much. Are we doing three? All right, proposal number 352, introduced by counselors Osley and Lewis, referred to the Metropolitan Economic Development Commission, Committee, reappoints William Selm to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, with consent, I would like to take proposals number 352, 2017, proposal number 15 through 18, and 54 and 55 together, as they're all reappointments.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 352 to 2017, reappoints William Selm to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 15, 2018, reappoints James Cannelli, did I say that right? To the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. Proposal 16, reappoints Russell Brown to the Fort Benjamin Harris Reuse Authority. Proposal 17, 2018, appoints Clara Galipsi to the Indianapolis Housing Agency Board of Directors, oh, we might have to take hers separately. I need to skip hers and go to 54, excuse me, because she's a new appointment. Proposal 18, reappoints Roderick Bohannon to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals. And proposal 54, reappoints Craig Von Dillon to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Number Three. Proposal number 55, reappoints Mark Young to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Two. All appointees appeared before the committee on Monday, February 12th, 2018, were unanimously recommended for adoption by a vote of 10 to zero, and, Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if I didn't get a chance to speak up for you went on with the agenda, but I intend to cast a nay vote on proposal number 352, so if that means separating them, I would request that. If not, please note my nay vote on that one.
So we will take these separately then, starting with 15. Proposal 15?
Not 17, Madam Clerk. That's a new appointment. Okay.
We are taking together 15, 16, 18, 54, and 55. That's this group vote now.
Okay, so we're taking five together and then one separately. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Two separate. 352 and number 17 will be separate.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, we can get the board. All right, those we have voted on together, 23 to zero. Madam Clerk, the other two.
Yeah, 17? Yes.
All right, so proposal 352 is going on the board? All right, thank you. The vote on that is 22 yays and one no. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Proposal number 17?
And I need to read it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 17, 2018, appoints Clara Galipsi to the Indianapolis Housing Agency Board of Directors. She was given a high recommendation by the executive director, Mr. Bud Myers, and she had a very extensive resume, and she did a well job. She showed up and explained, she's been working in the past on a volunteer basis and other things in this area, and she explained why she would like to be appointed to the committee, the board, and what she would offer. So, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Counselor Crider?
Why do you use separate?
Okay. All right. Proposal 18, 23 yays. Proposal number 24, introduced by Counsel Oliver to Parks and Rec, reappoints Joseph Winds to the Board of Parks and Recreation. Counsel Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on February 1st, the Park Committee wished to reappoint Joseph Winds to the Board of Parks and Recreation by a vote of 7 to 0. Due past resolution, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The proposal was properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to the board for a vote. Proposal 18 passes with a vote of 20, proposal 24 passes with a vote of 23 to zero. Proposal number 203, 373, 2017, and proposals 26 through 28 are all board appointments referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With consent, I would like to take, excuse me, thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 203, 373, 2017, and proposal number 27, 2018, together. Proposal number 203, 2017, reappoints Elizabeth Eglin to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal number 373, reappoints Casey Banks to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. And proposal number 27, 2018, reappoints Renee Turner-Pack to the Board of Public Health and Safety. All three of these appointments have resigned their positions due to various work and family obligations and have asked not to be reappointed. The committee recommends that all three proposals be stricken by a vote of 8 to 0, and, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Evans. All in favor? I can do a voice vote on this as well. You just chill out. I'll get to that. Counselor Ray? That passes 23 to zero. Counselor Evans?
Mr. Chairman, proposal number 26, 2018, reconfirms the Marion County Public Defender's Board nomination of Robert J. Hill as the chief Marion County public defender. Mr. Hill appeared before the committee on Wednesday, February 7th, 2018, and shared some ongoing challenges for his agency, including non-competitive staff salaries, coping with Chin's cases, and new caseload standards coming from the state of Indiana. He stated that he enjoys serving and would be honored to continue to serve in this capacity. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 8 to 0, and, Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
Second.
Proposal 26 passes with a vote of 23 to zero. Proposal number 28, introduced by Counselor Clay, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, appoints Jill Johnson to the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board Committee Action. That be Counselor Evans?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, proposal number 28, as you just said, appoints Jill Johnson to the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Ms. Johnson appeared before the committee on Wednesday, February 7th, 2018, and stated that she works as the juvenile division chief as a public defender in Mr. Hill's office. She said that part of her work involves the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, and therefore she is qualified to fill this slot for a JDAI representative. Advisory Board member Mary Moriarty-Adams spoke in relation to the new state laws and expressed the urgency in changing the local code to match the changes at the state level to receive much-needed grant monies. With the changes in the board makeup, it is important to appoint an individual as soon as possible to fill this JDAI representative spot so that the Community Corrections Grant will not be withheld. CFO Bart Brown stated that this grant is between $6 and $8 million and makes up most of the Community Corrections operating budget, and they must adjust their code to make these changes. code to make these changes and fill these additional positions so as not to jeopardize that. Juvenile Court Judge Marilyn Moore has explained her efforts to have the state change the appointing authority for some of these positions, as she feels the juvenile court should have some say in what the JDAI representatives should be. CFO Brown and Richard McDermott, Office of Corporation Counsel, explained that they have not seen anything introduced yet at the state level to make that change, and in the absence of that, the appointing authority at this point in time is the council. They recommended they move forward to fill this appointment so as not to jeopardize those grant dollars. The committee recommended the proposal for adoption by a vote of eight to zero, and, Mr. President, I so move.
The proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board. Very good. The motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to zero. Proposal number thirty-one, 2018, was referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Crider?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number thirty-one reappoints Henry Williams to the Board of Public Works. Mr. Williams appeared before the committee on Thursday, February 8th, to seek reappointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of seven to zero, and, Mr. President, I so move.
Second. All right. Proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a board for the vote. Proposal thirty-one carries by a vote of... passes by a vote of twenty-three to zero. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, I have an amendment for the agenda.
Please.
Thank you. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rule Number 151-63 for tonight's meeting to allow the introduction and adoption of proposals that have not yet been reviewed and approved by the General Counsel for form and legality.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? All right, very good. Thank you.
Introduction of Proposals. Proposals numbers fifty-eight through sixty-five of 2018, all are council resolutions sponsored by Counselor Simpson and referred to the Administration and Finance Committee. Proposal number fifty-eight reappoints Myla Eldridge to the Information Technology Board. Proposal number fifty-nine reappoints Claudia Fuentes to the Information Technology Board. And proposal number sixty, reappoints Sheriff John Leighton to the Information Technology Board. Proposal number sixty-one approves the mayor's appointment of Thomas Cook as the chief deputy mayor. Proposal number sixty-two approves the mayor's appointment of Jeff Bennett as the deputy mayor for community development. Proposal number sixty-three approves the mayor's appointment of Reverend David Hampton as the deputy mayor for neighborhood engagement. Proposal number sixty-four approves the mayor's appointment of Angela Smith Jones as the deputy mayor for economic development. And proposal number sixty-five approves the mayor's appointment of Hope Tribble as the Director of the Office of Audit and Performance. Proposal numbers sixty-six through sixty-eight are all council resolutions referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number sixty-six is sponsored by Counselor Jackson and reappoints Kenneth Allen to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal number sixty-seven is sponsored by Counselor McQuillan and appoints Jefferson Shreve to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number sixty-eight is sponsored by Counselor Jackson and approves the mayor's appointment of Emily Mack as the Director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. Proposal number sixty-nine was referred to the Municipal Corporations Committee. A council resolution sponsored by Counselor Gray reappoints T.D. Robinson to the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library Board of Trustees. Proposals numbers seventy through seventy-three are all council resolutions referred to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Proposal number seventy sponsored by Counselor Oliver reappoints Lori Kaplan to the Indianapolis Greenways Development Committee. Proposal number seventy-one sponsored by Counselor Oliver appoints Mark Webster to the Board of Parks and Recreation. And proposal number seventy-two sponsored by Counsel Oliver approves the mayor's appointment of Linda Broadfoot as the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Proposals number seventy-three through seventy-nine are all council resolutions referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposals number seventy-three was sponsored by Counselors Clay, Coats, Evans, and Crider and reappoints Mark Webster to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number seventy-four, also sponsored by Counselors Clay, Coats, Evans, and Crider, appoints Megan Durbin to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal number seventy-five sponsored by Counselors Clay, Coats, Evans, and Crider appoints Jessica Topper to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal number seventy-six sponsored by Counselor Clay approves the mayor's appointment of Brian Roach as the Chief of Police for the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. Proposal number seventy-seven sponsored by Counselor Clay approves the mayor's appointment of Ernest V. Malone as the Chief of Indianapolis Fire Department. Proposal seventy-eight sponsored by Counselor Clay approves the mayor's appointment of Paul T. Babcock as the Director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. And proposal number seventy-nine sponsored by Counselor Clay approves the mayor's appointment of Laura D. White as the Director of the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Proposals number eighty through eighty-four were all referred to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number eighty sponsored by Counselor Crider reappoints Jamar Cobb Denard to the Board of Public Works. Proposal number eighty-one sponsored by Counselor Crider reappoints Dr. Henry Fernandez to the Board of Public Works. Proposal number eighty-two sponsored by Counselor McQuillan reappoints Nathan Wilson to the Marion County Stormwater Management Technical Advisory Committee. Proposal number eighty-three sponsored by Counselor Crider approves the mayor's appointment of Dan Parker as Director of the Department of Public Works. And proposal number eighty-four sponsored by Counselor Crider amends Chapters 261 of the Code to establish a solid waste division as a separate division of the Department of Public Works. Mr. President, this concludes the introduction of proposals.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Special Orders Priority Business. Under Special Orders Priority Business, proposals number fifty-six and fifty-seven
I apologize, Mr. President.
No problem.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the requirements of section... I've already done that, but, Mr. President, the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee met on Monday, February 12th, 2018, and heard proposal fifty-six, 2018, which authorizes a final bond ordinance for the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed 3.8 million to provide a portion of the cost of acquisition, rehabilitation, construction, and equipping of mixed-use apartment building consisting of 132 units, 39,386 square feet of retail space, 33,851 square feet of space, and public-private parking facilities for a assembly plant project to be located at 1301 East Washington Street, District 17. Lisa Lee and Frank Hoffman from Ice Miller appeared before the committee, gave a brief presentation on the issuance of developer-backed bonds, which will be secured by the project's TIF revenues for this mixed-use development on site of the old Ford Assembly Plant on East Washington Street. Fifty-one percent of the apartment housing will be affordable at 80% of the average median income, and 75% of full-time positions will be available to the Indianapolis residents in partnership with Employee Indy. The committee recommends a proposal for adoption by a vote of ten to zero, and, Mr. President, I so move.
The proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counsel Fanning?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to add my name as a cosponsor to this proposal, please.
Thank you very much. Vice President?
As would I.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further, no additional comments, we'll go to the board for a vote. Proposal number fifty-six passes with a vote of twenty-three to zero. Proposal number fifty-seven, Chair Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, February 12th, 2018, the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee also met to consider proposal number fifty-seven, 2018, which authorizes a final bond ordinance or the issuance of economic development tax increment bonds in an amount of 4.5 million dollars and an economic development note not to exceed 4 million dollars to provide a portion of the cost of acquisition, construction, and equipping of a 20,000-square-feet Phoenix Theater, Education and Innovation Center, and public art to be located at 705 North Illinois, District 11. Mike Felent from Strategies and Bill Simmons, the Phoenix Theater's Capital Campaign Manager, appeared before the committee to present the plans for the first standalone theater built in Indianapolis over 100 years, which will be over three times the size of their current building and would allow the Phoenix triple its current production and training capacity and bring new apprenticeships and after-school programming to underserved, low-income students downtown. The project will create approximately 67 new temporary construction jobs, retain 22 full-time jobs, and create another 17 full-time equivalent positions. The project is backed by capital campaign pledges and will create a huge economic impact in a low-income community and act as an incubator by immediately seeding four new production companies and span contracts and/or insurance coverage for at least 120 low-income artists and increase Central Indiana's entire actors' equity production in by 21%. It will train annually 40 low-income adults and serve 100 low-income youth. By a vote of ten to zero, the committee recommended the proposal for adoption, and, Mr. President, I so move.
The proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board for a vote. If no one wishes to call down any of these proposals for public hearing, they will pass into law. Seeing none, proposals number eighty-five through eighty-seven will now pass into law. Special orders, public hearing. There are no items under special orders, public hearing. Special orders, unfinished business. Under special orders, unfinished business, there is a proposal to send a discussion and motion to remove the president. We, I think, will probably strike that right now.
Withdraw.
Withdraw. Can you say that?
I withdraw that, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. All right, it doesn't take anything more than...
He can withdraw.
All right. Thank you, Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Special orders, final adoption. The first item under special orders, final adoption, is proposal number fourteen, which was referred to the Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposal number fourteen, 2018, determined the need of leased space in Lawrence Fire Department Station at 7620 Oakland Enroe for the use by the Indianapolis Fire Department. Jason Kelly, Deputy Chief of Logistics for the Indianapolis Fire Department, and Chief Ron Marks, Executive to IFD Chief Ernest Malone, appeared before the Administration and Finance Committee on Tuesday, February 6th, 2018, and gave a brief presentation. This leaves formalized agreement IFD has had with Lawrence to occupy half of the station at this location since 2011 merger. Because of the location of Geis Reservoir having IFD staff at Lawrence Station number 36 will help to guarantee better response time and service to the citizens on the east side of the reservoir. Proposal passed out of committee by a vote eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board for a vote. All right, the motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to zero. The next item under final adoption is proposal number twenty-three, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chair Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on Monday, February 12th, 2018, the Metropolitan Development, Economic Development Committee considered proposal number twenty-three, 2018, which approves an amending declaratory resolution in 2018 plan of the Metropolitan Development Commission to expand the near east side redevelopment area to create the Ford plant allocation area to capture property taxes generated for the incremental assessed value of real property and to add the rehabilitation and equipping of the vacant Ford Motor Company Assembly Plant for reuse of residential apartments, office space, retail space, and onsite public and private parking to the original plan for the redevelopment area. Scarlett Martin, project manager for the mayor's office, and Joe Wisset, TWG, gave a brief presentation on the plans for a new near east side allocation area, which includes a rehabilitation of the Ford plant site as discussed previously this evening, proposal number fifty-six, 2018. TWG is committed to creating 35 new jobs under the one grant and 25 under another plus 150 to 200 construction jobs. Additionally, TRG will have three full-time employees, and they are committed to the 15% MBE, 8% WBE, 3% VBE, and 1% DBE minority women. Veteran and disabled hiring requirements are minimum requirements and not the end goal. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any further discussions from counselors? Counsel Fanning?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to be added as a cosponsor of this proposal, please.
All right, seeing no further comments. Ah, sorry. Counsel Evans?
Mr. President, I too would like to be added as a cosponsor.
Very good. Seeing no further comments, we'll go to the board. I'm sorry. Counsel Jackson?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. As a chairwoman, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor. When my own, I missed it. Oh, yeah.
I think you are. All right, very good. Are there any other comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board for a vote.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I'm not. I'd like to be added.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, I'm sure you've copied that. All right. Counselor Scales?
I just wanted to apologize to Counselor Jackson. Oh. It's getting late.
All right. This motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to zero. Next item under final adoptions is proposal number twenty-five, referred to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposal number twenty-five approved a request of the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase certain real estate owned by the estate of Yvonne P. Hartstop for a parks project at 2609 Senor Road, which the president had passed out of committee with a due-pass vote of seven to zero. I so move.
Second. The proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion from fellow counselors? All right, seeing none, let's go to the board for a vote. The motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to zero. The next two items under final adoption are proposals number twenty-nine and thirty, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Counsel Evans?
President, proposal number twenty-nine, 2018, amends the membership of the Community Corrections Advisory Board to conform to House Enrolled Act 1218, 2017. Board member Mary Moriarty Adams appeared before the committee on Wednesday, February 7th, 2018, and said that HEA 1218 requires that the Community Corrections Advisory Board expand their members, and this proposal does just that. Although the bill was...
Although the bill was passed on July of two thousand sixteen, they have not yet amended the local code to reflect these changes, and if they do not do so, they could miss out on some very crucial grant dollars, as was mentioned previously this evening during the appointment of Ms. Johnson to the board. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eight to zero, and, Mr. President, I so move.
This proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion from fellow counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board for a vote. The motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to zero. Next up is Proposal Thirty. Counselor Evans.
Mr. President, Proposal Number thirty-two, two thousand eighteen, approves an amendment to the two thousand fifteen restated Marion County Sheriff's Department Personnel Retirement Plan. Commander Tom Koppel, Sheriff's Pension Board Member, and Michael Binder, Counsel for the Board, appeared before the committee on Wednesday, February seventh, two thousand eighteen, and stated that the changes to the pension plan are to ensure that whether a retiree participates in the drop plan with a lump sum payroll or payout or rolls it over into an annuity, that they are equivalent in cost. State law requires that these be actuarially equivalent, and that has not been the case. An out-of-date mortality table and higher percentage rate were to blame, and so they have corrected those to a new mortality table and a more flexible percentage rate. The other change is related to making the composition of the pension board look more like their actual participants, as this is a frozen retirement plan that took place in the merger between IMPD and the Sheriff's Department, and more of their participants are now retired instead of active. Therefore, they needed...they added a second member who is an actual retiree. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eight to zero, and, Mr. President, I so move.
This proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's go to the board. And the motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to zero. Next item under Final Adoption is Proposal Number thirty-two, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Mr. President, that's Public Works, if I may. That's thirty-two is Public Works.
Thank you, sir.
Apologize. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes. Counselor Kreider, Chair, please.
Public Works Committee heard Proposal Thirty-two on Thursday, February eighth, which approves a request of the Department of Public Works to purchase certain real estate owned by Indianapolis Osteopathic Hospital Incorporated for the department's Little Eagle Creek Levy Segment Rehabilitation Project. Melody Park Chief Engineer appeared before the committee and asked first for an amendment to show that the correct owner was, as mentioned, instead of Butler University. She said that this property is needed for the rehabilitation of the existing levee along the east bank of Little Eagle Creek between Thirty-second and Thirty-seventh Streets just west of Guyan Road because the current state of the levee is not acceptable for FEMA accreditation. The proposal passed out of committee as amended by a vote of eight to zero, and, Mr. President, I so move.
The proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Is there further discussion from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board for a vote. And the motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to zero. The next seven proposals, Proposal Number thirty-three through thirty-nine, are all traffic controls, and were all referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Kreider.
With consent, Mr. President, would like to take the remaining all together.
Second.
Public Works Committee met on Thursday, February eighth, to consider these seven proposals. Thirty-three authorizers intersection controls at Ralston Avenue and Thirty-third Street in District Seventeen. Thirty-four authorizes weight limit restrictions in the residential neighborhood encompassed by Waldemir and Mickley Avenues in District Twenty-two. Thirty-five authorizes intersection controls in the Falcon Lakes subdivision in District Eight. Thirty-six authorizes parking restrictions on Chelsea Road between Lynnhurst Drive and Dunlap Avenue in District Twenty-two. Thirty-seven authorizes intersection controls at Clifton Street and Thirty-sixth Street in District Seven. Number thirty-eight authorizes a speed limit reduction in the Tibbs Avenue and Maywood Road area to twenty-five miles per hour in District Sixteen. And thirty-nine authorizes a speed limit reduction in the Meridian Woods Village subdivision to twenty-five miles per hour in District Twenty-three. All district counselors have signed on to these proposals, and they pass out of committee by a vote of eight to zero, and, Mr. President, I so move.
The proposals have been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board. Counsel Adamson. All right, and the motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to zero. There are no items under Special Service District Councils. We will proceed to new business.
Mr. President.
Counsel Gray.
It's not necessarily new business, but as a personal privilege, I would just like to thank all the counselors and friends who included my daughter in prayer during her time of sickness. And I'd just like to say, after forty-one days in St. Vincent Hospital, today we moved her to rehab, where we still have a long ways to go, but we have come a long way. And I wish that you will continue to keep her in your prayers and as she progresses. Thank all.
Yes, thank you, Counsel Gray, and we are very grateful. Announcements and adjournments.
Announcement. Announcement.
I'm sorry. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you. I too want to thank you all for your prayers. I'm still under doctor's care. I know I missed a January twenty-ninth meeting, and I will be under doctor's care for medical condition for the next three months, but prayer changes things, and thank God for medication as well. And also, I want to announce...Mayor Haas said announce his initiative, Project Indy, which is to create summer job opportunities for up to three thousand youth this summer. And so, youth, or parents, and grandparents, and all those who are taking care of kids, and you want them employed, now is the time to get them employed for the summer. You need to go to projectindy.net. I also will be hosting a youth summit on March twenty-third at Light of the World Christian Church, but I'll be having a press conference on March thirteenth at Light of the World at ten a.m. And so, I'm inviting all of you counselors to come, join us, and it's about our youth and getting them employed. The youth summit is two components, is job skills training, and then a job fair will take place in the second half of the day. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to let everyone know also that I will be hosting a job fair on March twenty-six from eleven a.m. to three p.m. on the near east side at Martin University. It'll be hosted by myself, the City of Indianapolis, Riley Area Development Corporation, LISC, Martin University, and the Center for Working Families. Please come by, let anyone know that might be looking for work to join us. Again, that's March twenty-sixth from eleven to three at Martin University.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Announcements and adjournment. We will now proceed to announcements and adjournments. The doctored agenda for this meeting of the council having been completed. The chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By Counselor Adamson, in memory of Debbie Clarkson-Green. By Counselor Cordy, in memory of Patricia Attabury, Kimberly Jackson, and John David McLeod. By Counselors Cordy and McQuillan, in memory of Douglas L. Walker. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask to support the fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body and that a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advised of this action.
Thank you, Counsel McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the request is so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.